...meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. Normally, we don't call the roll for committee of the whole meetings, but given our meeting format, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll for the trustees at this time.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
I can see her.
Trustee.
Here.
And President Polinski.
I'm here as well. So, we do have a quorum for this meeting. I would also ask the staff members that are present, and I'm going to read off the names that I can see, or actually, maybe Peter Skiles, if you could read off the names that you see of the staff members that are present, and also the consultants and the like that are on the call. That way we can have a full accounting for who's present.
Okay, so we have Mike Bremen, Village Manager, Chris Aspogren, Darren Olson, Eric Hallgren, Kyle Berger, Keith Pfeifer, Lisa Brock, Dan Manus, Melinda Malloy, Jeff Stein, and Peter Skiles.
I did as well. I see her.
Who's that, Bob?
I'm here.
Bridgette. Yeah, Bridgette's here too. I didn't hear you mention Bridgette. Since we're talking about sewers, I assume she was here. So, okay. I've got my introductory comment that I've been making now in these video meetings. For people who are watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order, which was issued by Governor Pritzker in response to the global, the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all of our village governmental meetings, in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state has suspended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the board. So, the staff led by Peter Skiles implemented this technology solution for the meeting, use Microsoft Teams. This meeting is being broadcast live on our local access to Channel 6. That's correct, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it's also being broadcast at YouTube Live, and the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. Again, youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. For those of you watching on television who may want to participate more fully in the meeting, that's the place where you can do that. This meeting is being recorded and will be archived on our YouTube site, as we do with all of our other televised public meetings. The meeting is a little different in that we're not in person, so how the public can participate is also different. To ensure that residents and business owners have had an opportunity to participate, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting. If people sent an email to publiccomment@willmet.com prior to the start of the meeting, the staff will read the email during the public comment portion of the agenda as appropriate. And if members of the public would like to participate during our designated public comment period, you may submit comments through YouTube Live, which will then be read by the village board, by a member of the staff to the village board. And all the comments that we receive, as always, are recorded into the minutes, as we normally do. So, with that introduction, the next item on the agenda is Item 2, which is Discussion and Determination of Path Forward Regarding Storm Sewer System Improvements. The, you know, the conversation we're having here is somewhat unusual in that we have already approved the storm sewer improvement projects and some of the related contracts even just recently. But this is the biggest project, biggest infrastructure project that the village has ever undertaken. We are also now living in unprecedented times, so we thought it prudent that the board understand the potential impact that the COVID-19 pandemic could have on the project, discuss those implications. And while the village manager has provided a recommendation, which is appropriate, given his role in our council manager form of government, just given the magnitude of the project and the environment we're in, we thought it appropriate that the board also weigh in here on the path forward. So, that's why we're meeting tonight. As you all know, whenever we discuss things as a group, it has to be a public meeting, and that's why we scheduled the committee of the whole. So, the plan for this item is the staff will make a short presentation. There's been a memo that you guys have all received. We'll have Q&amp;A through that presentation as normal. After we've sort of satisfied ourselves with questions of the staff, we will go around and again, our discussion's somewhat limited, but I thought the best way to go would be to just to go around to give people, let people give their initial thoughts, and then we can continue the discussion as appropriate or as desired, depending on sort of what people have to say in their initial go-around, and then hopefully, you know, reach an understanding of where the board stands on this, or at least a majority of the board certainly. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bremen and Ms. Berger for their presentation. And again, it's not really possible for people to raise their hand and ask to be recognized, so please speak up if you do have questions.
All right. Thank you, President Polinski. I'm going to share the presentation with the screen now, so let me just do that. All right, so can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
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 Okay. So, this is a short presentation, just to help frame the discussion tonight, and we'll move through it fairly quickly. So, there's two decision points for the village board this evening. The first is whether or not to proceed with community playfield construction as planned, scheduled to begin April 6th of this year. And then the second question is whether to proceed now with engineering design of Hibbert Park, so that we are ready for construction in 2021. The cost of that design is $400,000. We need to begin that design in the next couple of weeks to be ready for a '21 construction date. We can make a determination on whether to proceed with the construction of Hibbert Park later this year, once we have a better handle on the state of the economy and the village's finances. But without proceeding with engineering now, we wouldn't have the ability to move forward next year. So, as President Polinski had stated, I did make a recommendation. My recommendation is to proceed with both community playfield this year as scheduled, as well as the engineering design of Hibbert Park. This wasn't a recommendation I made lightly or I came too quickly. And to be honest, I've gone back and forth over the past two weeks as this situation has evolved. And it wasn't until we had completed our analysis and finalized our memorandum, that I came to the conclusion that proceeding was, in my opinion, in the best long-term interest of the village. I do recognize that a lot of our residents are facing some really significant economic uncertainty and struggles right now. So, I didn't make this recommendation lightly, but, you know, there's several reasons why I did. The first, and Bridgette will discuss this more, we're confident that the project is safe to build, both for residents, our staff as well, and the construction workers. And at this time, we don't foresee any major constructibility concerns. Obviously, there's risk with the project proceeding, whether or not we're experiencing this pandemic, but of course, there is a heightened level of risk with the pandemic. But with what we know, we're confident we can complete it. We don't know what we don't know, and that's why Darren Olson of Seaboard prepared a preparedness memo, which Bridgette will walk through briefly in a following slide. Also, in terms of the purpose or reason for my recommendation, we've already incurred $8 million of this project leading up to this point. We're going to have to issue debt to repay our reserves, because we've used our cash to fund that $8 million. So, one way or another, whether or not we proceed, we are going to put a substantial portion of the stormwater utility fee onto our utility billing accounts this year. And I think really important is if we don't proceed this year, we're at risk of losing $4 million. Half of that from the storage fees associated with the storm trap pieces for community playfield, and the other half for projected construction inflation, which we can talk about as we move forward. And then the other, you know, real reason that pushed me in this direction was the risk of not having access to community playfield next year, based on the school district's concerns and operational issues, and we'll touch on that on another slide. So, if we do proceed, I did have three subset recommendations. The first was to reevaluate the amount of the utility fee later this year. Once we issue our debt, we'll have obviously a very good handle on how much money we have to repay this year. And if there's an opportunity to reduce the fee for our residents and our business owners, we should absolutely take a look at that. And we, as staff, are committing to bringing that back to the board later this year. We'd also like to implement a financial assistance program for those residents who are experiencing extended hardship as a result of the pandemic. And we'll work on additional details with that, but I think that will certainly help those who may have a problem paying get through this first year of the fee. And we're also recommending that we delay collections of the stormwater utility fee until the third quarter for our non-residential properties. You may recall, we had already delayed that until the second quarter, as we studied the MWRD detention credits and the institutional credits. So, an additional quarter delay is not problematic, since we won't be paying debt service until later this year. And then we'll have additional information, hopefully, on what our actual costs are going to be.
Hey, Mike. It's Dan. On that, when you say delay the stormwater utility fee until the third quarter, but you're only delaying it to the third quarter, but it's still retroactive to '11. So, they're just going to get a bigger bill in the third quarter?
That's how we're looking at it now. I think as we dig into this more, you know, I think all options are on the table, and we could spread that over multiple quarters. We could not retro it. We just, we need to finalize building out our non-residential utility fee billing database and have a better handle on that before we can come up with some solid recommendations for the board.
And when will we do that? Because if you're asking us to support this tonight, are we going to be telling our non-residential properties this evening we're moving forward, but they should expect a big bill in the third quarter? Or are we, how are we going to message that to them?
I think, I would like to come back to the board sometime in the second quarter with some information on that. But, you know, until we issue the debt, you know, we really won't have a handle on exactly what the fee's going to be and what's going to mean for each of them. But in the second quarter, we can use our current projections and work with the board on what that could look like in the third quarter, spreading it over the fourth. And also, you know, as Melinda's going to talk about later, we may be issuing our debt later than we had intended, instead of the summer, in the fall, which means we may have a smaller debt service payment at the end of 2020, which would give us additional flexibility to delay some of that or not make it all retroactive.
So, is it later in the slide, is that when, when are you planning to go to market on the bond?
Melinda, do you want to jump in there?
Hi, trustees. So, as Mike was just talking about right now, we have continued to monitor the bond market and the activity that is going through. Thankfully, it looks like the market is stabilizing a bit more right now. But as we get further through, trying to understand where our revenues are going to be at and getting ourselves ready to go to the market, right now, it looks like waiting until the fall will be a better idea, because things are going to be more stabilized then. So, that's sort of the path that we're following right now.
And trustee Sullivan, to your question, you know, if we didn't make the, you know, if we didn't make the non-residential fee retroactive and didn't potentially charge them this year, we'd be looking at about an average $45 increase on the residential bill that would have to be doled out later this year. But again, these are all really rough estimates until we, you know, issue our debt, have a handle on when those debt service payments are going to be made. There's a lot of variables here, and I think it gives us a lot of flexibility to try to reduce the amount we need to collect this year.
This is trustee Dodd. I just want to ask a follow-up question to what trustee Sullivan said. So, I just want to make sure that if we make any decision, if we make a decision to delay the stormwater utility fee past the third quarter, and we don't retroactive it back to, you know, one particular bill, then there would be an impact to the residence bill. Is that what you're saying?
I'm fairly certain there would. It's just too early to come up with those, you know, really solid projections right now.
But right now, the way it's, the way we have it, in terms of who's paying, right now, it's just the residents who are paying the stormwater utility fee right now, at this stage.
Correct. In practice, yes, they're the only ones paying. The way the ordinance is drafted that the board had approved, we are still calculating the fee for the non-residential properties and planning to bill them in the second quarter. We'll be coming to you at the next April meeting, delaying that to the third quarter.
And when you talk about non-residential properties, are you also talking about multifamily homes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, I just want to make, okay, so, okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next slide, which Bridgette.
This is trustee Funtke. I just wanted to clarify one thing. The residents are not currently paying for any other property other than their own. That's what I wanted to make it clear, is that residents are currently not paying a greater share than their own share.
Correct. Residents are.
This is not the bill yet, but that does not mean that the residents are paying for anybody else other than their own individual property at this point.
Correct. Residents are only paying what they are, what was originally established for them to pay based on the tier they're in. And as of today, right now, you know, there are, you know, we're fully planning to implement the stormwater utility fee as the board had approved and as we had studied for the past year with Raptelis. Now, the discussion that we're having right now are options and flexibility we may have as we may, as we move forward, based on the timing of issuing our debt, our interest rate, and how much debt service we have to pay on December 31 of 2020.
And Mike, we have, we've already started billing residents for this fee in the first quarter. Obviously, shame on me, I didn't look at our bill, but I'm assuming I got, had to pay that fee, correct?
That's correct.
So, we've started collecting from residents already on this?
We have.
Do we, are we putting that collection in a separate account? Is it sort of in an escrow account that will be only used for this debt service? Or is it co-mingled with the village's funds?
This is Melinda, and we are accounting for it separately. It is not, Dan, going into an escrow account, because it doesn't need to, but we are, it is a separate revenue account, and it's being accounted for such. So, it is separate from the sewer fee.
Okay, so it's in our cash balances, whatever our cash balances are today?
In the sewer fund, though.
In the sewer fund. Yes, that is correct.
Got it.
Okay, if there's no other questions or discussion on this, I'm going to move on to the next slide, which Bridgette will address.
Thank you, Mike. So, your packet laid out a detailed memo, but there's a few important points that I'd like to just highlight. Since the pandemic, the construction team has been laser-focused on planning and preparedness. The pandemic has changed all aspects of the project, including how we interact with each other, how we interact with residents, and how we perform our respective jobs. Despite this, everyone involved has been and will continue to follow CDC guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The shift in how we do business and based on, based on the information that we know so far, we can confidently say that the construction team is, is absolutely confident at this point that we can deliver a successful project, should the village board decide to move forward with it. Now, the governor's executive order exempts critical infrastructure projects, which includes neighborhood storage. So, not only is Berger Excavating able to build the project, but all of the suppliers that are involved in the project, those who build the manholes and the pipes and the stone suppliers are also exempt and continue to build the resources we need to complete the job. Our most important supplier is Storm Trap, and they've already produced more than half of the vault pieces that we need, and currently, they have no concerns with their ability to produce all 2,300 pieces. So, this type of work involved in building Phase 1 is relatively low risk, because it is a very isolated form of construction. Basically, one person per truck, all day, every day, in the same truck. So, in other words, social distancing is inherent in this type of construction. We also include preparedness discussions, and we have in all of our weekly meetings, and we're going to continue to talk about it every week, so that we are confident that we can bring the project back to a safe and backfilled condition within a few days, if unfortunately, a temporary shutdown is required. As far as manpower, Christopher Burke Engineering and their team of consultants has a staff of 75 resident engineers. And Berger, you know, one of the great advantages of having Berger as our lead contractor is they are very qualified with 300 employees. So, if an operator or an engineer does fall ill, there are qualified members of the team that can step in, so the project can proceed. And finally, just one other point, while it's unfortunate that this pandemic has disrupted so much of our daily lives, including school closures, the advantage of the project is that we can accelerate the start with the schools being closed. So, being able to perform full-access activities in April and potentially May, while school is out, greatly reduces the likelihood of having to use birchwood as our access in August and September, and also reduces the likelihood of Sunday work. So, all that said, while it's not without risk, we are in a good position, and we've worked really hard the last couple of weeks in order to start April 6.
Bridgette, Peter Barrow here. Can I ask a question of you?
Certainly.
Did I just understand you to be saying or suggesting perhaps that you thought the full-access portion of the project might begin earlier than we had anticipated?
I, just to clarify, I said full-access activities. So, it's a little, it's a little bit confusing. If you remember the maps that we showed the board and that were part of our intergovernmental agreement exhibits, the full access exhibit actually built a hall road that was very close to the school. And in order to do that, it removed some curb and some sidewalk and created a nice, large, two-way access road. The school is telling us that we can't do that, because if the governor lifts the order and school goes back in session, they want to make sure that they have their parking lot put back together. So, when I say full-access activities, there are some methods that we can use in the Upper Drive, the Northern Drive, which we would, under the current terms of the IGA, be able to use after hours and on weekends. Now, we can use that all day while school is not in session, and there is a water main that we can protect underneath it that allows us to bring some heavier truck traffic into the site in order to gain some early production. So, we're estimating by being able to accelerate the job in April, we'll probably be two to three weeks ahead of the game compared to if we were just, if school was in session and we could only work basically nights and weekends.
Very good. Thank you.
And Bridgette, you know, the benefit of that is twofold, right? We're less likely to have to use Birchwood Avenue, and it's also less likely the contractor would need to work Sundays and evenings as we move further into the project, correct?
That's correct.
Bridgette, this is trustee Dodd. I have a follow-up question to Peter Barrow's. So, your estimate of, you know, if we could possibly get two to three weeks ahead of schedule, is that assuming that the schools don't go back in session at all? Is that assuming they are just closed up until April 30? I might have misunderstood how you were saying that.
Yes. Thank you for the question, trustee Dodd. That two to three weeks is assuming the schools are back in as of May 1. If schools are also out in May or for the end of the year, then that would be a tremendous acceleration of the schedule. And we'd probably be looking at it end of June, July completion date.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bridgette, this is Dan. Just on the Storm Trap, you said that they've completed, they've produced 1,365 pieces?
That's correct.
How, what, how big is a piece? I mean, when you talk about where we're storing these, are these just concrete blocks that we have to stack somewhere?
They are concrete blocks, but they're large, and there's a lot of them. So, we asked Storm Trap to come up with an estimate on how much space we would need if we were to store them, and we would need two point, at least 2.3 acres, which we don't have in any village facility, and it would take up a significant portion of any of the public parks.
So, where would these pieces be stored?
They would be stored at the Storm Trap facility, where they're manufactured.
Okay.
Is there a, is there a secondary market for these? I mean, if there's another village that's buying these and we sold them cheaper, would that reduce our, is that a way to offload the inventory?
I, I would say they're not exactly an off-the-shelf type product. They have to be designed for the specific application that they're being used. But that said, it's possible.
Walk me through the numbers. Sorry. So, we paid, what's the total bill for Storm Trap? Because it's 3.81 is the remaining payment due. We've already paid 1.18?
The total cost for the contract is just under $5 million. And.
Okay, that makes sense.
Just to clarify, the 1.18 million dollars, this is Eric, the 1.18 million dollars for the production of the current pieces is paying at the 40% mark for those. We would not make a full payment on those pieces until they were delivered and installed. So, the liability that we currently have is for 40% of the production cost. That's why it's at 1.18 for the 1,300 pieces.
Well, the memo says cost incurred to date. So, have we, have we paid Storm Trap 1.18 million?
That's what we owe them for 40% payment on the pieces that have been completed.
Okay, that's not my question. Have we paid them? Or do we still owe them that?
We have not paid them.
Okay. So, it's not cost incurred yet, and we owe them that money. Got it?
Well, it's incurred but not paid.
Right, okay. And then, so that 1.1, it's 1.18 plus 3.81 million is our total contract with Storm Trap?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Bridgette, when we had talked previously, you said that these pieces are somewhat custom, as in, and custom enough that we couldn't even use the pieces that were designed for community playfields at Hibbert or at Thornwood, because of the different shape of the reservoir, right?
That's correct. Yeah. It's going to be, they'll be longer, because our tanks at Thornwood and Hibbert are smaller footprint and much deeper. The physical size of the pieces will be different. They'll be longer to accommodate that.
Okay, can I ask a follow-up question on that, Bridgette? Because I, when you and I spoke about this, I actually thought it, you're right, there, the pieces are slightly different size, but a large reason why we couldn't use is because the other two parks are going to, I can't remember, this one's going to be gravity-based and the other two will not?
Correct.
So, so, so I thought I understood it to say, just to follow up on what President Polinski said, I thought I understood to say, part of the reason why we couldn't reuse it is because the fact that this is gravity, this is a gravity-based retention tank, and the other two will not be. But if there was another, to trustee Sullivan's point, if there was another gravity-based retention tank out there, it's possible they could, we could resell, we resell these on the market.
It's possible, and I don't know if Matt Moffett, he's our designer, if you want to jump in on that?
Sure. This is Matt Moffett with Paxton Woodman. You know, there's something that, question that had come up earlier with our design team, and we've discussed it amongst ourselves and Bridgette and the representatives with Storm Trap. And the difference isn't so much the gravity versus pump facilities, but the actual height of the facility. So, the internal height from the floor to the ceiling, the pieces are produced with that specific height. So, the pieces being produced for community playfield have three different heights to them, six feet, seven feet, and six foot nine inches as throughout the, throughout the sections of the vault of the internal height. So, to be able to reuse them or be able to have potential reselling them, we would have to find facilities, we'd have to redesign or replan our approach to the other two parks to make it work with that height, which would greatly increase the footprint, as we know is an issue at the park district, or have to find another municipality or facility somewhere, looking to construct something about that same height and get them to convince them to use the height that we have. So, that's really the limiting factor on the resale or the reuse of the pieces.
Kathy, does that answer your question? Because I got another, I want to go back to mine, but I don't, if you still want to add a follow-up?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
So, and I apologize. On the Storm Trap, I'm just not, on page four of this memo, it says we owe 1.18 million for the production of 1,365 Storm Trap materials. If we don't move forward, we have to pay $491,000 in 2020 for the storage of those 1,300 facility pieces. Now, on page five, though, it says we owe 3.81 million for final payment on 365 completed, and then the full remaining payment for the 942. So, is 8 million really the total, or will we still, if we walk away and just say, we just need you to produce 1,300, and we put this on hold, do we owe them more than the 1.18?
If we, if we were to hold them for a period of time, we would eventually still owe them the final payment on all of the pieces that have been produced. It really just comes down to the final timing of the project. You would owe them the additional 60% on those 1,300 pieces, but if we were. pieces, but if we were going to move forward with the completion of the project, we would have to complete those remaining 942 pieces.
Right, understand. So, but that 60%, they haven't come back and said, if we put it on hold, we have to write them, we have, we have to pay for 100% of the 1,300 pieces? We don't know that date? If we say we're gonna hold it?
This is Jeff. Can you, I don't know if you can hear me, but this is, the final date would be September 30. So after September 30, we have to pay 100% for all pieces produced. We can stop production prior, obviously, but after September 30, we have to pay for all pieces that are produced to 100% and storage fees beginning earlier that month as well.
Got it, okay. And I apologize if I missed that somewhere.
Bridget, the safety, that, to me, that's, that's paramount concern here. And I just want to make sure that, you know, with, I think what you said was with the appropriate tweaks, because in general, this is a project where people aren't, this isn't a roomful of carpenters working on a home remodel or something where they're all a few feet apart. This project sort of by its nature separates people. Are we confident of all of the, you know, sort of staff, the engineering staff and, and the village staff and everybody who's not driving a truck, that they're also going to be okay under these circumstances? And then also take it a step further and talk about, you know, our residents, are there any, is there any incremental safety risk to the residents or the students that, you know, may come back during the process in law? Just give me a little bit more on just the safety element of this project, because I think that's, that's on top of a lot of people's minds, certainly mine.
Sure. So in a conventional construction project, we would have a field office that would be kind of the, the meeting point for all of our daily and weekly meetings. We made a decision not to have that central meeting point. We won't have a field office. We're gonna have, the consultants and village staff will have all our meetings remotely. And if we do need to meet in the field, obviously, we'll practice social distancing. And so basically, all of our meetings in person will be outside with that, with that distance between us. As far as residents are concerned, we've already changed how we are going about our business with residents. One of the things we're doing is Lisa Brock from RHMG has been contacted by many residents who want to have their home inspected for structural, existing conditions, if they're concerned about some structural damage. So typically, we would go in and do an in-person video or take photos of the home. In this case, we're guiding the homeowner to do that themselves and take document, take photo, photo document anything that they're concerned about, and then we'll just host that information. So we're being very respectful of residents. If they want to meet in person, again, we'll certainly do that and maintain social distance. But we don't ever want to make anybody uncomfortable, nor do we want to put our staff or consultants in, in, you know, a difficult position as well. Does that answer your question, President Blinsky?
Yeah, thank you.
Bridget, this is Santa. I've got a follow-up. Are you confident that without a field office, that there's still going to be enough oversight for this project and that everybody, you know, with all the different consulting groups, that everyone will, you know, still have a handle on what's going on?
Sure. Yeah, that's a great question, Santa, I'm sorry, Trustee Plunkett. And the answer is absolutely. The amount of coordination and, that we've had even in the last two weeks preparing for April 6, just through teams, team meetings and conference calls, and I would say it has been a seamless process as far as our own coordination and communication. And I would expect that to continue. Berger has been right alongside us every step of the way, as has Storm Trap. So I have no reason to believe that there'll be a breakdown in any of that as we move forward.
And is that going to change any of the, I understand there's consultants that are going to be onsite? Is that, has, is that plan changed at all as to who would actually be onsite during construction?
Not at all. We'll still have an engineer out onsite every day when the contractor's working, actually multiple engineers, doing their inspections, measuring quantities, talking to residents, making sure everybody's concerns are met. So the execution of the work is not changing, just some of the methods that we're using to communicate are changing. Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question. Joel Kersman here. Can you characterize, give us a sense of how much we have spent on this project so far?
Eric, do you have that number?
And I'd like to include staff time as well.
So that, Trustee Kersman, that's coming up in two slides. If there's not any more questions on constructability, I can jump to the IGAs, and then we have the financial slide that we can walk through.
I have one more question. This is Trustee Dodd. So Bridget, thank you for that summary that you put about constructability and things like that. It was really helpful, and I appreciate your, like, careful review you guys have had with the contractors and things like that. Do we, in the event that obviously things continue here and potentially get worse in terms of the virus and the extent of exposure, do we have any concerns, can this project go on without you, without you and Dan around? In the event something happens to both of you? I just want to ask a question, because you're leading this project, Bridget, and if you're, if something happens to you for several weeks, or, and then, I just want to ask that question. And I hope to God that we don't have to worry about that, but, you know, we just saw today people on the news are, you know, heads of countries are coming down with this.
Well, I would even like to think, even if I were infected, I would be able to work from home effectively and still manage teams. If it got to the point that I weren't able to do that and Dan wasn't able to do that, we do have a really strong project manager on our staff, Ryan Kearney, who would be able to work with the consultants and do some of that day-to-day coordination. In the event that it became too much for our staff, then we could actually even reach out to hire another consultant who could basically become the acting director of engineering and public works if we had to, to basically be the owner's representative on the project. I, I don't foresee that happening. I, you know, that would be really bad luck if all of this went down.
Enjoy the moment. You just got elevated to a head of a country, head of a state. Very nice compliment.
I'm not worried if I go down, that the project, okay? Any more questions on constructability before we go on to the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay. So, brief discussion on our IGAs and our private property easement. We've reached out to our partners at the Park District and School District just to touch base on where they're at, on their thoughts, if the project gets delayed and what impact that may have on us. From the executive director's viewpoint at the Park District, there are no major concerns if we were not to proceed in 2020 and seek to do construction work in 2021 at Community Playfields. Obviously, that would need to go to the Park Board for approval as an amendment through the IGA, but there were no major operational concerns from the Park District standpoint. School District 39 is a bit of a different story. And in your memo is an excerpt from an email from the School District Superintendent to me regarding the impact to the schools if we seek to build Community Playfield in 2021. They had moved around a number of life safety capital projects for this year and some summer programming to account for our project. And if we were seeking to delay our project to 2021, that would be problematic for them. And they're not certain at this point that they could guarantee us access to the High Crest parking lot in '21. And if that's the case, it leaves us with two options. The first option would be to proceed with Community Playfield in 2021 without a School District IGA, which means either going down Burkeswood Avenue or potentially purchasing a home on Meadow and accessing the park through Meadow. I think we, we've talked about, you know, those options before and those being problematic in terms of disruption to residents. But that is one option to proceed moving forward, which would reduce some of our storage fee costs with Storm Trap. The other option would be to delay Community Playfield into a later year and potentially proceed with Hibbert Park in '21 and then come back in maybe in 2022 and see if the School District would then be able to grant us access to the parking lot, depending on their operational issues. And then we also have the private property easement. This is the one that comes up through Meadow Drive and accesses Community Playfield from the south up to the north. We do have a start date that, we have to start that work by May 31 and then complete it within 45 days. If we don't, we'd be looking at having to renegotiate that easement for 2021 or another future year. We've incurred a small cost so far. There are different trigger payments with the private property easement based on dates and completion of work. The first trigger date just passed, and we owe, are in a process of paying $60,000 to the private property owner for that. So that's basically the summary of our access and our easements. Community Playfield is the most complicated of our three projects just because of the number of parties we have to work with and get access into the park. Hibbert Park and Thornwood Park, not nearly as complicated, and mostly working with the Park District and possibly a private property owner or two, depending on how we're looking to access those parks. Eric is going to walk us through the financial analysis. Melinda's going to wrap up this slide at the end and talk about the bond market. And then our following slide is our current projections on 2020 revenues based on the pandemic.
So I know we've touched on a variety of the financial pieces already, but kind of wanted to go back and just run through them really quickly. All the costs that we're talking about would be, having to be reimbursed from the 2020 bond issuance are related to the Stormwater Project. So they do include costs that are associated with Phase 1A, Phase 1, and some of the overlying engineering work for the project. So included in that $7.5 million includes about $1.5 million in engineering-related work, about $4.4 million.
Eric, let me interrupt. For trustee's benefit, this is on page four of the memo, so you can follow along.
Yep. So there's around $4.4 million for Phase 1A sewer installation. So that's for work that was completed last year as well as work that has recently started. There's the discussion that we had on the 1,300 Storm Trap pieces, and then there's the $60,000 for the private property easement and that, that first payment associated with that. So when we look at the 2020 costs that would potentially be incurred if the project is delayed, we're looking at around $500,000 for the storage of those 1,300 Storm Trap pieces that have been produced to date. If we look out and we project that cost even further out, we would look at around $1.8 million of storing those for an additional 15 months until we could potentially start constructing this project in 2022.
And just, just a point of clarification here, Eric, because I had asked the question as well. That didn't seem to make sense that it would be only 491,000 for 2020, but 1.8 for 2021. And the reason for that is that we don't start incurring storage costs until September or October or something like that in 2020?
Correct. So we'll start incurring those storage costs after what the, per the contract, after the estimated date of installation. That's when the storage fees would start to kick in. And then also looking at the future cost of delay, we'd be looking at around $2.3 million for inflation by shifting these three projects out a year. So that $2.3 million inflationary figure really is associated with the, with, with all three projects. It's not just specific to this individual project. And then looking for 2020, if we want to complete this, if we, if the decision is to go forward with completing the project in 2020, we would expect to incur around $26.5 million. This is going to include the costs that we've incurred to date, $400,000 for engineering Hibbert so that we would stay on track for that project, $11 million for construction contract with Berger, around $1.4 million for construction management with Sebel, and then there are additional dollars associated with the Park District and the School District amenities that are around the $2.6 million range. So if we were looking at the 2020 Stormwater Utility Fee, if we were to, currently, the $26.5 million, if we were to look at what that does to the average Stormwater Utility Fee, that's around $144, if we were to delay certain portions of that, that would bring that cost down, that potential cost down for the Stormwater Utility Fee.
And just to clarify, this is the average residential Stormwater Fee, so Tier 2 is the $144 for 2020?
And the, the $144, that's using Melinda's original assumptions regarding the bond issuance, 4% rate, which even with the, with the craziness that the market had a couple of weeks ago, we didn't get to, right? So there's, there is benefit improvement potentially in those figures.
Correct. I think that goes back to Mike's original statement about, we will, we will certainly go back and review the fees that are associated with this after a decision is made on what we do moving forward with this project and then whatever potential issuances we have. We would adjust and work with those fees to mitigate or to minimize that impact towards residents or any of those, the non-single-family residential fees as well. I didn't want to swoop in on the bond issuance stuff from Melinda.
Eric, Peter Barrow here. Question quickly. Clarify for me, is the $144 what the middle-range property is currently paying?
That is correct. So somebody who is a Tier 2, who's received their bill, would have paid $144. I believe that the flat fee associated with that is $40, and the, the fee for being in Tier 2 is $104. So all the residents will play the fat, the flat fee and then the different tiers will dictate that variable cost.
Right. So what you're saying, you're saying then is that, that with this $26.5 million expenditure, that's covered by the $144. The, the decrease in the fee to $88.66, that comes as a result of, of stopping?
Yes, that's a, yes, that's a fair statement.
And if I could clarify two things, the $144 and the $88 are the annual fee. So we're billing on a quarterly basis. So the first quarter residential bill for the average property was $36, and that's what we've collected to date from each property that's been billed through the first quarter. And then same would go for the $88. Melinda, can you talk about the timing on, on the bond issuance, what we had initially thought about?
Mike, before, before you go ahead, Trustee Kersman, did that cover your questions around costs? I just want to make sure your questions were addressed. Yes, thank you.
All right. And sorry, before we go to Melinda, I just wanted to follow up on one more point from Trustee Barrow. Now, that $144 is the residential fee. You know, if we don't charge non-residential properties, that $144 may not cover our debt service, right? So that's based on our current plan, which would be to charge those non-residential properties beginning later this year.
And to the extent we exempt some or all of those, we can expect that dollar amount to increase?
Correct.
And in addition, to the extent that we decide to delay collecting and going back to arrears, it would also, it would also increase that cost if we feel like we can't go back and recoup quarters one and two right away.
Yeah, I, I think that's dependent on the timing of when we have to make our first debt service payment. There may be flexibility there. Melinda, if you could talk about how we had initially thought about timing our debts, our, our issuance, and now what we're looking at, and how that could impact when we have to make our first payment?
Sure. So if you can recall, and we've discussed this before, we were planning on going into the market this summer, and we were hoping that we were going to go in maybe in July. That was our initial thoughts. Given current conditions and what is occurring right now, we are now thinking that it would probably be better to wait until the fall so that we can get further along and we get a better sense of where the market is at. If you looked at page five, the bottom of page five and the top of page six, there was some commentary to give you a flavor for what happened in just basically a two-week timeframe for For a while there, the municipal bond market froze up. And the chart on page six shows you what was happening to rates as the federal government has stepped in. You can see that rates were coming down. There still is a liquidity issue though in the municipal bond market. So as we have had discussions, we are thinking that it's going to be better for us to go in the fall. We would still probably have a January 1 debt service payment, but we would work with the financial advisor to position that initial debt service payment such that, number one, we would be, my hope is that the market is looking as good as what it does right now because that's going to have a significant impact on some of the estimates that we put together. But when we put those together, we had asked the financial advisor to sculpt the payments so that we could manage what that first-year impact would be. We would still look to do that with our first payment in January 1.
In essence, interest, you know, no, no principal in January, no principal in early 2021.
We would look at doing a capitalized interest, Bob, so you're correct, and see what that means for the overall issuance.
Yeah. So Melinda, I think we should, I'd like to get involved in that conversation. Our municipal folks believe that the market will be ready for big issuances as early as next week. So we should just keep our eye on the market, obviously, and be nimble there to the extent that it appears that the market is completely open for business. Part of the reason is there's an enormous amount of stimulus and enormous amount of Federal Reserve activity that's being targeted at the market. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're staying flexible and nimble here that in the event that, you know, our financial advisor comes back and said, oh, no, changed her mind, July does look really good, that we're ready to, to roll as well with bond council and all that.
Oh, so I can already tell you that we have gotten our responses back on both the financial advisor and the bond council our fees, so we'll be moving through those and are working with the finance committee to make selections. We are continuing to move forward with our audit, as you might expect. That has been a bit challenging given the current environment that we're in, but we are still pushing forward on making sure that we can get our audit completed in timely fashion. So Bob, I can assure you, we are trying to do everything we can to make sure that we are ready.
Since you brought up the audit, let me just ask two questions. Is the fieldwork complete already and has the state made any change? Because we have to deliver, when does the audit have to be delivered to the state? Is it six months after or something like that?
It's 210 days after the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so there's time still.
Yes, yes. And to your question about fieldwork, they have been out. However, last week was actually considered a quote-unquote "fieldwork week," which we couldn't do because of social distancing. So what we were able to do is accomplish quite a bit of it using electronic methods. We still have some more loose ends that need to be tied up.
Okay, thank you.
One follow-up question of Bob's. If you made the decision, if you made the decision yourself that we wanted to go forward now, how long would you estimate it would take before there could be an issuance?
I don't think we're going to be ready for an issuance much before, I think by June. And the reason why I'm saying that is we still have to complete the audit. That's one of the big pieces that we are going to have to have done.
This is Malloy, it's Gina Kennedy. Earlier in the year, there was some talk about the taxable bonds possibly being as attractive as traditional municipal debt. Is that still the case?
I'm going to tell you, that is still something that might be on the table and that might be a discussion item, I guess. Trustee Kennedy, I would think right now, in these past couple of weeks, that the biggest concern was what was even going to happen with the market, period. So in my mind, should that be something that we still consider and look at as we go forward? I think so.
Okay.
I think the bigger concern was just how are we going to get everything sort of done and completed in time so that, number one, we could go to the market and that the market was actually going to be there for us.
Okay.
And, but on the taxable bonds, it wasn't as much to finance this, it was much more for refundings and the like, wasn't it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's the flexibility that it gives you in the future.
Yeah, yeah, right. I understand. Okay.
Anything else on the financial analysis for this project before we move on to our 2020 revenue projections?
No.
Okay, we'll move forward.
So we have already begun to look at what are some of our revenue sources that we're likely going to see impacted by the crisis that is happening right now. And one of the things I'm going to say at the outset, which shouldn't be a shock, is I can't tell you exactly what's going to happen. The data points that I've looked at to try to give us some sense as to what might happen is I've gone back to look at how some of these revenue sources performed during 2008 and 2009. So I've looked at that. I've looked at revenue performance for January and February because that's the only information I have in the current year. And the first thing I think from that point that I'd like you to understand is in most cases, these revenue sources that I'm showing you here on this slide, they were actually performing how we expected this year or even slightly better. The percentage decrease from budget that I have there, that's reflecting what happened with these revenue sources outside of the license fee, which I can talk about that more in a moment. But the other ones, this is how they performed in 2008 and 2009. In the case of real estate transfer tax and the permit fees, they actually performed poorly, not only in 2008, but we also saw additional declines in the double digits in 2009 as well. So as time goes on, we will continue to monitor these to see what is going to continue to happen. But this gives you some sense right now as to what might happen with these larger revenue items.
So Melinda, it's Dan. How did you come up with 10% reduction on sales tax? And, go ahead.
So Dan, this is purely based on what I saw happen with that revenue source in 2008 and 2009. It declined 11%.
All right. So how do I walk through those flows then? On sales tax on a monthly basis and, you know, given that we basically have lost most of March, when will we see that impact? When will we collect those sales tax dollars and what month? Would it be in April or in which month?
So the governor passed a, an executive order that allows all of the retailers, the eating and drinking establishments, they will not have to report their first quarter sales tax until May, June, July, and August. So we won't even have a sense of what those true numbers are until the fall. The rest of the entities, again, there is going to be a delay in all of this, trustee Sullivan. So I'm not going to have a good sense on what has happened from March and April. I won't know those figures until like July and August as well. So that's why I can't give us a better data point to look at than when I go into the past to look at what's happened.
So for the month of April, in 2019, it was $363,000 for that month. Should we still get that same amount? Because that, those are sales receipts from January or December?
So to your point, when I looked at trustee Sullivan, as I looked at, the other thing I did was to look at the second quarter activity in 2019. So for sales tax revenue, in total for that quarter, it was $742,000. So I'm not making a projection to say that we are going to lose that in its entirety.
And keep in mind, everybody, that our, some of our largest sales tax generators are our grocery stores. And while they only pay the 1% municipal tax, from what I've read, grocery stores are up 60 to 100% year over year. So that increase from our two jewel locations and the fresh market is going to help buttress some of the loss from our other sales tax generators.
And would we expect to see an increase from internet sales?
The use tax so far this year has been performing well. And we are getting a small portion of the cannabis sales tax as well. We actually received our first little portion of that in March.
And trustee Barrow, yes, that use tax, the internet basis will go up. For the 2020, that's still distributed on a per capita basis across the state. 21, right, Melinda, is when it starts being distributed based on location of where those purchases are made?
That is correct.
I mean, I think all municipalities in Illinois will see a greater use tax collection, you know, for the months of, you know, March, April, May as we move forward.
Is that how we budgeted the use tax for 2020? I thought we budgeted that we were expecting more in 2020. Did that get pushed back?
The state pushed it back, right, Melinda?
Yes. And we had budgeted a 2% increase in total in sales tax. And when we looked at actually our activity for January and February, we were spot on.
Got it. But the use tax got, and then, but also in our budget, didn't we expect, I thought I remember in one of the packets, we said, the good news is we'll have a full year of Pescadero and Carlos and Carlos and some of these others.
You are correct.
And then permits. Have we seen any slowdown in permit requests?
No, actually, we haven't thus far. So my staff right now has been putting in quite a bit of work to try to keep up with all the permit requests. So we currently right now have not seen a decline. In fact, that activity for the first quarter was up 20% compared to 2019.
I understand that residential construction is not one of the businesses that has to shut down. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Melinda, can I, can I just ask you to clarify? When you talk about permits being up 20%, that was first quarter, but I think there has been a slowdown over the past two weeks, correct?
So Mike, from my perspective, because we already have, we're getting the impact of what has been approved and is moving forward. So in the finance department, I am still feeling that. And the community development department, in terms of their review, they might be seeing something slightly different than me right now.
Yeah, that's, that's a good important distinction. You're right. So it's people finalizing the plans that they had already submitted and were getting ready to pay. But we are seeing very few permits come in the door right now. So that, that's slow.
Well, Village Hall is closed, you know.
We are, we are taking them online.
I know, but still.
Mike, have anybody who's had projects and have they asked for delays because they don't want contractors in their house? Do we know that?
Yes, from John, hearing from John Adler and Lisa Roberts, yes, that is taking place.
And then real estate transfer, how about, what about the activity there? We seen any slowdown there?
No. In fact, again, that was going to be another good story for us because we are actually up in our activity compared to, so this is all through Friday's information, we are up actually 26% for the first quarter. We had 94 transactions, that's 13 more than last year. And I don't think that's necessarily unique to Wilmud. I think housing activity because of mortgage rates, I think that's, that's something that was being seen in more regional perspective. It was up at least in January and February.
Hey Mike, Peter Barrow here. Would you expect any of the Optima fees to be paid in this year?
Both John Adler and I have talked to them in the past week. They're still intending to proceed. Jeff is working on a preliminary PUD ordinance. It may not be April 14th, it may be April 28th. And Optima was still on target for a late, late April, early May final PUD submittal. They did indicate that their, the bank had asked to delay their closing by several weeks, but their last message was they intend to proceed, it just may be delayed slightly. But, you know, as the situation evolves, that's of course subject to change. But, you know, a million-dollar permit fee would make a significant difference for what we're looking at in terms of revenues this year.
And if, so go back to the, the timing, delay a little bit, when would those fees start to be paid and how much would you expect to be paid once the, once it started? Expect to be paid in 2020?
The full fee gets paid when they get their permit. So they would have to pay that full million dollars anytime they pull their permit between now and December 31st.
I think we should expedite that.
If we can, we will.
All right, yeah, and I think, look, this is preliminary. If any of us could break the future, we wouldn't be sitting on this conference call right now, I suspect. But I, I've got some thoughts on refining it and other trustees who have thoughts, you know, please share those with Mike and we can work through this. I'm frankly, myself, I'm less worried about the bottom four and more worried about the top two. If we don't have capital gains this year because the stock market's down, we won't see an income tax increase or we'll see a decrease. And that might be more comparable, not necessarily to '08, '09, but backing up to say just 2018. And then sales tax, I'm more worried. And I think we can maybe do a little bit more analysis with the, with the very limited data that even I can't see, but that Melinda can see around our different sales tax generators and make some assumptions around, you know, groceries up, but every restaurant is down for four months, you know, down 80% or whatever. And we can make some assumptions there to try and put some precision around this. But even with that, it is a guess and we all acknowledge that.
We'll, we'll work on tightening up the sales tax. And then on the right side there, you see, we've been working over the past couple of weeks to identify potential expense savings or deferrals. We've identified about $750,000, a combination of operating expenses, engineering capital outside of the road program. We fully intend to proceed with the full road program this year, no matter the decision made tonight. And then some vehicle expenses through our SERF. So that'll help offset some of our revenue losses. Now, keep in mind, we did just approve the sales tax rebate program, which is about half of that $750,000. So our net potential expense savings is probably closer to, you know, $375,000 by the time we're paying out those rebates because we've had a lot of interest in a really short period of time. We'll be having a report to the board tomorrow on that.
So Mike, and I saw one of your answers to the question that we can defer $240,000 worth of trucks?
Yeah, we're looking at, it's the sidewalk snowplow, we'd be looking to defer. And, you know, off the top of my head, I can't recall what the other one was. There are several vehicles that we've already approved purchases for and have POs out for, especially on the public works and fireside. So there's some limitation there. But those that we haven't purchased and aren't, you know, mission critical right now, we are looking to defer. And that doesn't mean we're not going to do them this year. It just means we're going to hold off on making a decision on whether to move forward until we have a better handle on our revenues.
But ultimately, we need to replace some, right? Whether it's this year or next year?
Correct. You know, something like the sidewalk snowplow gets a lot less use than some of our other vehicles. So what it means is more downtime, you know, it might take us a little longer to finish the sidewalks. But yeah, if that's not replaced this year, '21, '22, you know, what we would do is look at deferring, you know, vehicles from '21 to '22 and '22 to '23. Kind of unfortunately what we did during the recession, which backed us up and had created, you know, some big, you know, kind of balloons in terms of our vehicle expenses, which we'd like to avoid and why we had created the SERF.
Yeah, a lot more conversation to be had on, you know, the financial situation for 2020, but this is helpful for purposes tonight of sort of what we perceive the risks potentially to be here in the year.
And actually, can I, can I finish? I have a liquidity position. I mean, I asked the question, do we have lines of credit available?
No, we do not right now.
So we don't have anything? Okay. Why, did we cancel those or do we ever have a line of credit?
It's my understanding that the village had them back in early 2000 and that they did them for pointed reasons that when I spoke to the bank president, her recollection is it had to do when we were purchasing property. But as a matter of business, I guess we don't, well... But as a matter of, of business, I guess we don't, well, my tenure here, we've never had to utilize a, um, a tool like that.
And trustee Sullivan and the rest of the board, the fifteen million dollars we're showing in reserve, that's just general fund. We have additional liquidity in our sewer fund and our water fund, and, uh, we still fully anticipate North Main Utilities coming on board, uh, this summer, which is additional found water revenue. Um, and, you know, if it means delaying our water main replacement program for a couple more years, we can build up some additional liquidity, uh, until we have a better feel for how, you know, future budget years are going to shake out.
What is our total liquidity position for the village today?
Um, I'll answer it, and just, give me just a moment, I can answer that.
Well, fifteen million is the general fund reserve, and that's cash primarily. We don't have property or any assets in that right now, do we?
We have twelve twenty-five central, which is six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. We can keep going, you can give it to me later.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other questions for the staff on the presentation or otherwise? Uh, my thought was that we would quickly move to public comments to see if there was any public comment before we move into discussion, but I want to make sure all the questions have been answered first.
Now Mike, were you planning to walk through a handful of questions that you'd received? Is that the next step here?
I can, we answered a lot of them as we went. Um, so I, I can kind of shoot through the ones we, uh, try to go and identify the ones we didn't, if you'd like, or we could just open it up, whatever.
Well, ask the trustees, are there, are there other questions that you might have asked, uh, earlier that you've got answers to that you'd like, uh, talked about now, or, um, are, are we, we sort of set for our understanding of the situation at this point?
Uh, I, you know, I've got, uh, this is Santa, I have a follow-up question for Bridget.
Yes.
Hi, so, um, the first part of the project, the community play fields, um, once, assuming it's built, or even just discussing, you know, if we're going to build this, um, once it's finished by the end of the summer, um, will it be fully operational and it's connected and it's working and it's providing a benefit, you know, even though it's a portion of the product, of the project?
Sure. Um, so the benefit from community play field occurs when it's connected to the trunk sewer on Wilmette Avenue. So that's, um, as Burger is building the vault, they will also be building the infrastructure. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes, I can hear.
I'm sorry, Santa. Um, yeah, so they, they're, at the same time as they're building the vault, they'll also be building the sewer on Wilmette Avenue, Up Meadow Drive, and then connecting into the south end of the vault, and that will make it functional, um, so it can receive water and hold water and then send water downstream. And then as we continue further south to build the base sewers into, uh, Willshire Drive in that neighborhood, then that neighborhood will see some protection as well.
Would it, um, would the vault, the community play field, um, be, once, you know, those extra sewers are done, is it holding at capacity if there was a rainstorm?
It's, it would be holding at capacity, um, as long as all the pieces are built. So we're just talking about the base sewers to the south, and then next year, we, we would be building the alternate two B sewers, those are the ones that go down Hunter and Washington, and at that point, um, the, that, that whole system would be built. But remember, that's only one-third of the entire, um, the, the entire project. So, you know, when we talk about the true benefits and the true flood relief, um, that will come into play when we build Hibbard and Thornwood as well.
I understand. Is it, uh, because of the size of the tank at community play field, is it actually a little bit more than one-third of the project, or can you?
From a cost perspective?
Not even a cost perspective, but just in a, in a, I don't know, in a size, holding, you know, how much water it can handle.
Sure. Yeah, it's right around nineteen acre feet, and I think that includes the additional storage. Darren, can you jump in and, um, help me out with that? I think Thornwood, Mike, and my next one is just like.
Sure, the other two combined are twenty-three acre feet, so if you combine Hibbard and Thornwood, those are twenty-three acre feet. So this is just under half of the storage volume.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions for the staff right now?
Um, I have a question actually for either Burger Construction or Christopher Burke, I don't know who is the appropriate person for this, and maybe Bridget, you can help with this. I just wanted some perspective, obviously you prepared the, um, the memo that talks about just the, uh, the preparedness. I'm just wondering, um, you know, if you could give some, give me some sense of what's happening with some of your other projects you're doing in other municipalities? Are those projects proceeding? Um, you know, and I just thought it might be a helpful perspective for us to have, um, and one, if all of them are proceeding and then things have to shut down or whatever, so I just kind of wanted a sense of what's happening with all the other projects you have and what impact that could have on this.
Sure, and, and before I let the consultants speak about their projects, or Burger can certainly jump in, um, I know IDOT and I believe the Tollway, those large agencies are proceeding with all their planned construction. So the state is still business as usual.
This is Darren Olson, um, our resident engineer staff is informing me that all of their projects are still moving forward. Kevin Wilson, who is, um, working on this project, he was in Lincolnwood all day today, pouring curb for one of their projects.
Um, Kyle or Chris from Burger, do you have any other projects going on this year?
Uh, so this is Chris with Burger Excavating. I can tell you, um, most all the projects that we have, especially in the municipal market, are moving forward and have taken advantage of some of the weather opportunities that we've had. I can tell you the only projects that we've had that have, um, been stopped, we have three hospital facilities that we were working on, and those are the only projects that have been stopped as a function of the virus right now.
That seems to be backwards, seems like you'd want to build the hospitals, right?
It does seem a little backwards, but, um, I, you know, from a safety perspective and things like that, um, there's always risk that goes with construction, and I fully understand why, um, nobody would want to have those risks in play at this time.
Oh, and those are probably projects that are on existing facilities. These aren't greenfield, these are like additions.
These are additions or remodels or, or improvements on existing facilities, so you can understand why they would want to table those.
Absolutely, that makes sense, yes.
So I'd like to ask, uh, we, we saw earlier that the average resident would experience fifty-six dollar impact by delaying the project. Um, can we now talk about what cost has gone into getting us to this point, just with the project generally? Um, whether it be dollars and or time that has been taken to get us to this point?
Yeah, I think in dollars, it's that eight million dollar figure, I think it was more specifically seven and a half million dollars we were talking about of costs incurred, incurred, that we would be paying no matter what we do this year. Uh, and then from a staff perspective, obviously the staff time has been significant, um, you know, Bridget, Dan Manis, myself, Jeff, um, Melinda, Eric now, so, I mean, there's been a considerable amount of staff time. Fortunately, we're all exempt employees, and we're not paying out overtime for all of our work on this, um, so it's a soft cost, uh, in that regard.
Does that include all of the studies and all the consultancies and everything that has?
Yeah, that was my question too. Yeah, there, there's a bunch of other sunk costs in terms of getting us to the point where we're actually spending money on the project in terms of the two engineering studies, uh, in particular, right? I mean, those are the big ones.
Value-based?
Right.
Correct, and those, those are several, several hundred thousand. Eric, I, I don't believe those are in that seven and a half million, were they?
That is correct, they are not included.
Well, those are already been, those have been expended in prior years.
Correct, back to twenty eighteen. There is, there is a cost to that, uh, you know, I, Melinda may be able to pull that now as we're talking, um, you know, that, that's not in the seven-figure range, that's in the six-figure range, but it's certainly a cost that we incurred.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? All right, so I'm going to try to use our public comment mechanism again, uh, so we'll begin, so again, people have the opportunity to submit public comment in advance via email, so, uh, I'll ask the staff if there, if there were any public comments relating to this discussion, uh, submitted in advance. I will ask for general public comment, uh, later as item three, but were there any public comments submitted with regards to this, um, request? And I'll also mention to people who are watching on YouTube Live, this would be the appropriate time to, um, submit comments, uh, for the staff to read as well. So were there any submitted in advance?
There were. Alex, can you, uh, read those?
Yep, this is Alex Ortega from the manager's office. We received one, um, emailed comment. It reads, uh, and this is from Thomas Richter, um, just says on Coolgate Street, not an address. Dear Wilmette Village Board, under the current situation as a, as a result of the COVID-19 outbreak and all its future repercussions to the economy, communities, and expected hardships on financial budgets, people's income and frankly, potential changes of ways of living going forward, isn't it prudent at this point to reconsider this massive project and perhaps at a minimum postponing it until an assessment of all the above can be done?
Okay, and that was the only comment received via email.
Correct.
And, um, then I will also ask, um, and Alex, are you also watching the YouTube Live, or is Peter watching the YouTube Live?
I am, I'm watching YouTube Live.
Okay, so we'll give him, uh, you know, a minute or so here, maybe thirty seconds to see if any comments queue up on that, uh, right now, so we'll just sort of put on pause here for a second.
Sounds good.
All right, so have we received any comments?
Nope, at this time, there are no additional comments.
Okay, so we'll move on then. Um, again, my thought here, just making sure we don't have any more questions, my thought was just, again, it's a little hard to have sort of the, the open discussion, we have to be a little more organized around that. So I'm going to go around, um, and ask trustees for their sort of initial thoughts, I'll start, and, um, the, uh, the, the mechanism we used last time, sort of going in, in terms of seniority of tenure seemed to work well, so we're going to stay with that for, for at least this meeting. Um, so, look, I, I, I think I agree with the staff's recommendation here, but let me walk through all the sort of considerations that I think are relevant. Uh, first off is safety, first and foremost, safety. Um, is this, is moving ahead with the project going to impact the safety of our residents, including students at surrounding schools? Is it going to impact the safety of the village staff? Uh, is it going to impact the safety of the workers on site? And to some extent, given the, the nature of the project, we're helped by that, and I think, uh, I think Bridget sufficiently addressed those questions, uh, such that we shouldn't consider safety to be, uh, you know, a, a concern here, any more than it's a concern, uh, throughout our, our daily lives now. Uh, the constructability question was also very important, you know, we don't want to get going, uh, if we think there's, uh, a probability that we're going to be, uh, stopped midway. Of course, we can't predict the future, we don't know what this is going to hold, but given what's happened in other countries, um, and sort of the extraordinary actions that are happening, uh, governmentally here, um, I think that the, uh, the, the likelihood of some extraordinary, uh, action making us stop, um, and I believe, you know, and I may pause here, the, the staff has sort of answered the question of if we had to pause, uh, what would that entail? Um, and while not desirable, it is possible. So I don't think that, that, the, the, at least the COVID-19, for all its, its disruption, isn't disrupting construction. Um, so I don't think that that's a, a concern, um, that troubles me. Of course, in all of this, we're, we're balancing our concerns against the cost, and not just the cost of dollars, but the cost of further delay in terms of, of bringing the relief, um, that this project, uh, brings to residents. From a legal point of view, um, I'm, I've read the governor's order, lawyers have read the governor's order, I suspect other trustees may have read the order, and it has been pretty clear that, that construction activities like this are, are not, um, uh, limited, and obviously the IGAs are important, could we renegotiate them? Certainly, but I think we, you know, it's also, we, we should be mindful of the disruption that we put on, uh, our governmental partners. And in a weird sense, uh, this, the disruption caused by COVID could cause this to actually be good timing, because, uh, there are sort of limited programs, uh, if school indeed, uh, stays out for a longer period of time, we may not have full access, um, and nobody wants school, by the way, to be out for the rest of the year. I think in particular for District Thirty-nine, it would be great if the kids could get back to school and have some semblance of normalcy, uh, before, uh, the summer comes, but, but that's not our call, um, that'll be the governor's call at the end of the day. So, you know, from a timing point of view, it actually could be a good time to do it because next year, people are going to be, uh, have, have, they have things on the plate, and from a park district point of view, um, you know, they're going to certainly be less excited about having the main fields taken out when, when they've had this kind of disruption. So, um, so balance that against, uh, the cost, it's obviously higher, that's not a deal breaker at the end of the day, uh, if we, if we felt we needed to delay, but I do think the delay for the residents is, is material. Uh, you take the economic backdrop here, there's a lot of uncertainty, there's no doubt, uh, we are not yet in a repeat of the global financial crisis. This is not two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine, it's not what people expect it to be. Uh, the government, federal government is throwing tons of money at, uh, the unemployed, at small business, at governments, um, you know, two trillion dollars, right? And so people are trying to head off, uh, that kind of experience here. Stock market's obviously down this year, um, and that is relevant to not only economic activity, but to people's, uh, retirement savings and the like. You know, the market was up almost thirty percent last year, um, and now it sits down twenty-one percent. So, you know, net, net, two years, you're still up, but that's not the way really people view that stuff. So there are unknowns here, we can't predict the future, there's no question, um, that that is the case, but on balance, I feel like, uh, we're in a position that we can proceed forward, and I did find the comments from our outside engineers that, um, the construction industry, uh, at least major municipal projects, uh, seem to be moving forward, um, uh, as, as, as planned. So, not an easy decision, uh, lots to think about, but I, but I'm on the side of, of proceeding with this, uh, with the project. Sorry, I, I talk too long as I usually do. Um, I will move on to trustee Sullivan for his initial thoughts.
Um, oh, thanks President Volinsky. Um, look, I've been working on, on sewers longer than I ever thought I would in my life, so, uh, you know, glad we got to this point and fully supported, I think I'm the only one, or one person who's probably voted for this on every meeting, um, and support this project and, uh, and wanted to move forward and was a hundred percent there, um, and I had all the confidence in the engineering, uh, the process, and actually agree with the memo that Bridget put together and confident we could put together a, a safe project if moving forward. Where I'm struggling though is, um, when I supported this previously, I had a much better handle on the numbers. Um, and though I could, you know, understand and respect that, you know, we cannot predict what's going to happen, and every projection is just, just that a projection, we're being asked to spend twenty-six million dollars, and I haven't seen a financial statement in ninety days. Um, we haven't updated any models, we haven't updated any downside cases, and, you know, I think of, again, and I referenced it in our last board meeting, what I do, um, in, in lending money, I would never lend anybody money that has never shown me a model today. And, and, you know, again, I know projections are just that, they're guesses, but for this one, I have a hard time saying, "Let's move forward," but telling the residents, "I really don't know the impact, I don't have a firm handle on the impact." We haven't decided what the stormwater utility fee is, um, how that's going to get allocated to, um, all of these other institutions, we are still debating that. And we've had to take a pause, a respective pause because of, of this virus, um, but I also think that's, that, we need to be smart here, we don't know what's going to happen in the village, and I, I agree with you, this is not like two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine and, and the housing crisis that was financed, that was driven by Wall Street. This is not like 2008 or 2009 and the housing crisis that was driven by Wall Street. This could be worse. This could be, you know, we are, we're finding out. I think the announcement came out today that we're home for a whole month, you know, or the month of April. So, you know, I think this is one that I would like to support it. But I just didn't feel like the information that was given to me to get me to this point was not up to par. Was not enough analysis to say, this is how we can do it and make it work. I know there were some hypotheticals as far as here's some downsides. And by the way, we can pull 750 out of a budget that, you know, we really talked about the budget last time. And all of a sudden, now we're pulling stuff out that was, we needed to have it, we needed to have it. Now we don't really need to have it. So I just, unfortunately, I've lost confidence in the numbers because I don't have any numbers and anything updated. I wish we had been given models like we had historically when we were looking at this project and it could help me get there and get my head around what would be the impact of the timing of the sales tax reduction, some of the numbers that I referenced today. What's our pension obligation? You know, we referenced the market down. And I know the pension's invested in fixed income, but is that a bigger bill? So I would like to support it. I just can't figure out how much are we going to tell the residents? Hey, worst case, you might have to pay X. And this is what it's going to cost. I think this project is totally needed for the village. I said it back then that we need to do it. But I also think, you know, I go back to what I also said. Stormwater improvement here is a long-term plan. And we got to get this right to make sure the viability of Willmet is sustainable for a lot, a number of years. So I'm going to listen to some other trustees to help me get there. But right now, I am not on board until I see some better financials coming out from staff and some of the details because I can't tick and tie the numbers. So that's where I am.
Whoops, trustee Plunkett didn't unmute.
Hi. All right, can people hear me now? I'm cognizant of what's going on with residents and, you know, their paychecks and their financial situation right now. But I think what we need to see to understand that this is, we are not paying for the entire stormwater project with this one part. I think this project is in pieces, but I don't think that we are right now at a stopping point. As a resident, I'm already paying for the stormwater project. I'm already getting a bill. And the incremental increase to my bill is not going to be that much higher when we construct community playfields. I think on the average bill, it's about $60 higher. If I'm paying for the stormwater project, I want something to show for it. I want a tangible benefit. And right now, we've been paying upfront costs. We've been paying engineering costs. We've been paying, you know, construction costs for the storm trap. But we don't have any benefit yet to our residents. So I think we owe it to our residents that if we are, if they're going to be paying for this anyway, that they have some benefit. I think Darren Olson said that the community playfields, this tank is almost, is just a little under half of all the storage capacity. So there will be a tangible benefit to our residents by just completing this. And then we will be paying for something that is useful. And I do think that, you know, the Hibbert Park, the Thornwood Park, there is time to review what is going on in the world, what is going on financially, what is going on with residents. But I think that increment between what we are already paying and what we will be paying upon completion is going to be worth it, especially when you take that cost into consideration of the benefit. I mean, the, you know, the increase in, or the decrease in floodwater, you know, that is a tangible amount of money. I also think that, you know, I'm heartbroken along with most residents that, you know, schools are out and that there's no Park District programs going on right now. But, I mean, is there a better time to do this project? It would be really hard to, you know, have all of the spring soccer canceled and the spring baseball canceled this year only to have to cancel it again in one or two years. Let's just get this over with. This is the most complicated project of the three tanks. And all the pieces are in place right now. And frankly, to delay this is incurring more cost to our residents. And, you know, think about all the money that would be pumping into the economy as well. I'm comforted when I walk around the neighborhood and I see landscapers and I see home construction. It's just a little hint of normalcy in this crazy world right now. So I, you know, I would like to see normalcy as much as possible. But I think that, you know, this might just be, you know, the right time to do this project. And, you know, we will have a tangible benefit for our residents once this is done. And then we, you know, can review the other project, the other, the other two parks and see where our financials are at that point. Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Plunkett. Trustee Dodd?
Okay. So it was helpful to hear from President Blinsky and trustee Sullivan and trustee Plunkett. Before I say anything, I just want to start by saying that I hope all the trustees, staff, and residents listening are taking care of themselves. You know, I mean, I just, this is such unprecedented times. And I know all of us are struggling in so many different ways. And so, you know, I just hope every trustee and staff member who's on this call and all of our contractors are being safe. And thank you for all you're doing because this is just such a difficult time. So I'm torn. And so I want to continue to hear what everybody else says. One of the things that trustee Sullivan said that I agree with is, I want to make sure everybody understands from my perspective is, it's not that we're, we're talking about when we start this project, not if we start this project. We've already made a decision as a board to proceed with this project. And we all feel very strongly proceeding with this project. And I voted in favor of this project. And like, I haven't been on the board as long, but have also voted in favor of everything that's come in front of us regarding this project. So regardless of what we decide tonight, I think it's important that the community understands that we are committed to doing this project. But this is unprecedented times. And we're only in day 10 of this virus, day 10. And we already know it's going to at least go as far as day 45. And I think most of us know it's going to believe it's going to go beyond day 45. And that's why I'm struggling. And so much has changed in the first 10 days. I don't know what we can predict is going to happen in the next 10 days. And so for that reason, I think mostly I'm in support of waiting a week or two. And I believe we have a week or two to wait. We're scheduled to start this project April 6. We could schedule a board meeting, you know, April 13th if we needed to, instead of the, so which would be a week later. And I think in two weeks, we'd have more information. And I believe we might know what is the plan for the school. I mean, we've already had the governor within two weeks issue two different dates in terms of the closure. We've had our president issue two different dates. And I believe that would be in our best interest. And I don't believe that it would necessarily create a significant delay. We already heard from Bridget that assuming we have access, we could be two to three weeks ahead of schedule. And that just assumes that we have access by the end of April. I think we all, I think we're all talking today that we don't know whether schools are going to go back in session. So if we assume that at least we're going to go through the middle of May, that assumes that we will be two to three weeks ahead of schedule, which is why I think we can wait a week or two to make this decision. And in that time, I think we can get some better sense of, Bridget I know is exploring whether or not we can get, we have access to the site, but we need to be careful. We don't have full access to the site. We still have early access. And the school board has been very careful with that. And so I think we need to explore. If we're going to start this, let's start it and get it done as quickly as possible. Waiting a week or two gives us the opportunity to do that. I'd also just like to speak to some of the comments that the other trustees made. You know, I think we have to be careful saying that we've already started to pay for this and we want residents to see the benefit to this. Because I think we know that the full benefit to this project won't be done until we've complete all the phases. So while we might get the community playfield completed, those residents that are impacted and need Thornwood, we're not, we don't, we're not feeling they'll get significant benefit until Thornwood is built. And so I want to be careful that we're making a decision because residents are already starting to pay for it. We're starting to pay for it now because this is such a significant project. I'm really concerned about starting this project when we haven't figured out how to bill 25% of those responsible for paying for it. And I believe that might be higher. And I'm also concerned that those 25%, if we start to build them in the third quarter for three quarters, that's, those are our small businesses that we were just talking about in our projections, are going to be hurt and not have any revenue or sales tax revenue for three to four months. I don't, I'm concerned how we could do that. I do agree with what, obviously, I agree with what President Blinsky said. Safety is our most important thing. And I think that, which is why I do believe if we wait and could understand some of what's happening in the next week or two, we know that we could, and we make sure that we don't, because I'm concerned about a shutdown. I'm concerned about what a shutdown would do and how we would get things back up. And I think within two weeks, it's possible we'll know that. Nothing is certain, but I just believe we've learned a lot in the last two weeks. We've got a presentation, and President Blinsky mentioned this, about constructability. And that this is, you know, and I appreciate it was very helpful to hear from the other, from the other contractors and Christopher Burke that all these other projects are proceeding. But I do want to say that actually, at least as I've looked, and I did some quick search today, that I do believe Italy and Spain have actually stopped all construction. So I think if we look at what's happening in these other countries, they actually have addressed that and they're not proceeding, especially for sure in Spain. And so that causes me concern because we are one or two weeks behind them. So I don't know. I think that's where I am right now. I think if we were to proceed, I've talked to the staff, I know probably more than they would like, about trying to do just the school portion of this to limit our risk. I think we have to look at limiting our risk because things are so uncertain. And so I would be, if we, if others are comfortable waiting a week or two, I think I could get in support of, at least right now, starting the retention tank on the school property. You know, if we didn't have the issue with the school board, I'd probably be in support of just waiting. But we have an issue where the school, and I understand that, has projects they need to do. And so for that reason, maybe we just modify and start smaller and get the school, get the retention tank on the school. So I'm sorry if I talk too long, but those are my thoughts.
Trustee Kersman?
Well, in quick response to just a couple of comments, now is the time to show your commitment to this project. It's really hard to hear people say, I've always been for this project. I'm supportive of the project. Now is the time to demonstrate your support for the project. Inertia is not our friend. It has taken approximately 30 years to reach this point for West Willmet without even a shovel in the ground for a first reservoir. And this is compared to the five years it took, not just to get a shovel in the ground once a problem was identified for East Willmet, but to bring a project to completion. And so I think there are a lot of problems here. And at first, it starts with the neighborhood storage project being financed by a utility that in no fault of itself sticks out. And it gets differentiated as delivering something extraordinary or different as opposed to a typical service that other residents take for granted when they pay their property taxes. And so I'm not thinking through right now how to rebate residents for their use of roads, police or fire services, or for the use of sewers in East Willmet. And so I don't think we should be contemplating the stoppage of a stormwater utility fee to fund the neighborhood storage project, anything other than full speed ahead. And it's not that I don't appreciate hardship. Actually, it's quite the opposite. My employment has been on rocky ground for months now. And my prospects moving forward are very uncertain. And so I can appreciate the challenges here because those are my own. But that's not the only perspective I want to bring to this. The Willmet resident who's experiencing economic hardship would not be experiencing the hardship on account of this project. They'd be experiencing economic hardship from their overall tax burden. Willmet residents who are the most vulnerable to economic hardship are most likely to be helped by the neighborhood storage project, such as those living in my current, in my former neighborhood. And I'm not hearing from residents in these areas other than disbelief that there's yet another potential hurdle to overcome. And there might be an exception to this, of course, from our NIMBY friends who we've started to hear it from tonight again. So none of that's to say that I'm not concerned for the construction workers. That is definitely warranted, but I do feel like that's been addressed. It's just the same as the concern for the landscapers who are going to be increasingly proliferating around our village, serving residents all across our village. And it's just the same as is the concern for the restaurant owner and the workers for whom we encourage and we are promoting our residents to support. All our considered essential services all have some amount of direct interaction. And so while there's some amount of theoretical risk, we seem to be okay with some of those examples as a matter of village policy. And so I think it should be no different with the construction workers involved with the neighborhood storage project. And I also think that the cost of increasing, the cost increase question is real. Because I can recall prior to this board and even prior to the previous board that, as advocates in West Willmet, we were disturbed that the conveyance option wasn't even called a conveyance option. It was called the $77 million project. The boards of those days didn't even delve into the details or try to educate the public. They just looked at the number. The conveyance plan was what we have come to talk about as option one and that we deemed to be too expensive. And I'm not here to dispute that decision, but just to observe that the laborious intergovernmental agreements with the schools and costly intergovernmental agreements with the schools and the parks are putting the neighborhood storage projects in that vicinity of that figure. And so I circle back to where I'm starting with my comments in that there is a cost to inertia. We have to fight through this and reach some point of action. We may think we've worked really hard on stormwater. We may think we've been really supportive of stormwater. But for the residents of West Willmet, you know, what are they seeing? What are they, what have they experienced? You know, West Park addressed sanitary, but not stormwater. So we can think that we've done all this for stormwater. But now is the time to be for stormwater. Now is the time to be for West Willmet. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Kersman. Trustee Kennedy?
Yes, like everyone else, I guess, safety is important. No, not, I don't guess. Safety is important. But I feel convinced by the staff and what the engineers have said that outdoor construction probably poses a lot less of a risk, both to the community and to the workers themselves, than a lot of other activities that we are allowing to continue, like retail, like some retail shopping and carryout in restaurants. So I'm not too concerned about the safety issue here. And that means that it's only really a question of whether the uncertainty of this time is such that we should delay the project. And on that one, I don't think we should delay. The economic disruption that is being caused at present by the virus is significant. And there's no reason to think that that will just end in 2020. It will most likely continue in some portion of 2021. So if we delay this project, it seems to me very likely that we will incur storage costs on those pieces for two years, adding significantly to the cost of the project and adding nothing to the value that we'll receive at the end of the day. So I'm not in favor of raising the cost of the project out of just a fear, somewhat in coattail now as to what, how this might affect people in the village. It is going to be a difficult time. But like trustee Kersman, I don't think that the fee alone, that we are considering charging residents for this project, it's going to break the bank for them. We can, to the extent that there is hardship, I think we can deal with that for people who are suffering hardship. But it's not going to be generalized hardship across the village. But it's not going to be generalized hardship across the village. So we should proceed with this plan, and we should do it in a way that's most cost-effective, which I think means doing it now. And I also agree strongly with Trustee Plunkett's statement about the disruption to the parks and to the kids in the village. We really are going to lose an entire season of athletic activities in the parks. So this might be the best time ever to do a project like this. But to shut down the park this year, and then again, or to not shut down the park this year when there is no activity going on there, and shut it down next year when there potentially will be activity in the parks, that seems like a cruel sort of trade-off to make for the benefit of the parkgoers and the children who participate in those programs. So I see no real reason to delay this project further. And as far as the financials are concerned, the project cost, as far as I can tell, has not changed from what we last talked about in the fall and in the early winter. It is what it is. This uncertainty that we're suffering because of the virus is not affecting the cost per se. And so that end of the financial consideration is fixed. And I don't think that that's something that I could fault the staff for not, you know, modeling well. And in terms of the payment end of that model, that frankly is not the staff's fault. That's our fault. I mean, we've dithered on making a decision about exemptions for nonprofits and commercial properties that do stormwater detention underground. We should not have strung it out this long. I wish we had not done that, but we did. And it's our fault, not the staff's fault, that that hasn't been resolved before now. So I would put that on a fast track if we possibly can. But go ahead with the project as well on our regular schedule or on a faster track if the use of the parks and the school district property is available to us.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Barrow?
Thank you, President Blinsky.
Peter, you stayed awake through that all, didn't you? You made it? Because we went on quite a bit. I just want to make sure you're still with us, right?
Totally, totally. Who wouldn't want to see this? I'm keenly aware that we're having this conversation at an extraordinary economic time of economic uncertainty, that Willmet is surely likely to see families that are out of work, whose working hours are reduced, whose compensation is cut significantly, and that we are entering into a time, I believe, of some extraordinary economic hardship. The modeling that we have for the diminution of various revenue accounts is simply that we need significantly more time before we understand the effect of the world we're living in today. But thinking about the project that's before us, any delay to the project surely involves current and future costs, but it allows us to reduce the stormwater fee. So the question in my mind is, are we acting prudently here? Are we spending the residents' money wisely? The staff and the consultants and several of you have addressed the safety issue. I think that the unique aspect of this project means that those types of issues are likely not to be of concern to us. So I'm really not concerned there. I am concerned, though, that we be acting in a way that's consistent with how our residents would actually view their own spending. And my take on all this is that if we delay until 2021, it means we can reduce the stormwater fee by an average of about $66. That's not insignificant, particularly for families that are feeling economic hardship. But it also means that the community playfield piece can't be built until the late spring of 2022 at the earliest, because none of those other access options are viable. And that's 2022 at the earliest. It might even be later if we begin another park before that and have not completed the work on that park. Because my understanding is the park district is allowing us to do one park at a time. So not going forward also would mean that we may be changing the timing for the work on the other two parks. Doing nothing here means that we incur costs of delay in an $8 million bond issue without any current benefits to the residents at all. I don't think that that's a prudent way to spend our residents' money. I favor moving forward with this piece of the project, but I think the other two pieces will need to have a very close look to see what our current financial conditions are and how that financial condition would affect those projects and other village spending. So I can support moving forward at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Trustee Barrow. I'm going to offer people the opportunity to add anything that they want after everybody's talk, but I want to address just a couple of comments that were made. First, around sort of the fee. You know, we're talking about tweaking along the edges here, and, you know, plus or minus 10% on the current projected residence fee is $15 a year. And that's, you know, I mean, look, money's money, and we need to be prudent with the taxpayers' dollars. That's one of our main jobs. But, you know, given the modeling, as I've looked at it, you know, you're just not talking about significant differences, even taking the extreme ranges of how we view the institutional properties, the 501(c)(3)'s and the stormwater projects that are on those properties. So I'm not as concerned, and as you know, I'm a financial guy, and so I think I get it that there's going to be a tweak. But by the way, we're going to face this exact same issue every phase of the project. We're going to have a bid. We're not sure how much the bid's going to be. We're going to get the bid. We're going to issue bonds, and we're going to increase it based on what happens. But I think the staff has a good enough handle on that today. The other concern that I want to address is just the change of, you know, whether this project can go ahead and whether there's a more severe lockdown. Most of the states are following guidance that came from the Department of Homeland Security on these so-called essential businesses. And that's why they're very similar state to state. And one of the areas, you know, this would be under infrastructure spending, and in my judgment, one of the least likely items to actually be restricted, because what you're talking about is, you know, building roads and sewers and sort of health and safety-oriented items, and this is municipal project work. So I don't think that's a significant risk. Of course, there's always risk. So, and then just with regards to the overall modeling here, look, I think we have a good enough handle on the numbers to approve the project. There are changes in what's going to happen at the financial level of the village as a whole, so every dollar's important. But we have a dedicated revenue stream here. There isn't a risk that something happens economically and now we're really stuck because we can't pay the bonds back. We have a dedicated revenue stream here. It's very important to look at where all of the total tax burden sits, but that's not a function of COVID. That's not a function of the coronavirus, the revenue stream that we have for this project. So it's consistent with what Trustee Kennedy said. COVID isn't changing the cost of the project. It's also not changing the dollars of our stormwater fee, and it's also not changing the uncertainty that we currently have around exactly where that fee's going to be. That's not COVID stuff. That's more just our process and where the board is. So trying to address some of the concerns that were raised and why I don't find them as big a concerns, but I will open the floor again up for anybody who would like to add anything else, just given that we sort of went round robin and, you know, some had, Trustee Barrow had the benefit of hearing everyone, Trustee Hup Sullivan had the benefit of hearing no one.
Trustee Kennedy, what do you, fast track, what do you recommend that we do for, so everybody participates in the stormwater fee?
No, 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 no. Separate conversation, not tonight.
But I would like, instead of deferring this entirely until the later part of the second, oh, I'm blanking out, quarter, I think we should get on it now. I really think that we've delayed, we've delayed, we've had no meetings for quite a while on the subject, and I don't think that we're missing any information to make a decision.
Well, one of the issues, one of the issues that was raised in our meetings was not having a good handle on all the properties. So my understanding, and Mike can talk to this, my understanding is staff was working with Raftellus because it hadn't populated the institutional database yet, and they were working on that. And I don't know how much the social distancing issues have raised that. Mike, can you give us, give us an update on sort of the timing of having the institutional database filled out? That would just remove uncertainty because you could actually do exact math, like here are the numbers and the like, so.
Sorry, I was muted. It's not just the, it's the entire non-residential database, not just the institutions. So everything that's not single family is in there.
Right. Raftellus, turn that database over to us a week and a half or two weeks ago.
So we have that information now so that we can make those more specific decisions. So in terms of how I was looking at laying out our April board meetings, was having a more involved budget discussion on April 14th, our 2019 year-end update, the expenses that we're looking at possibly delaying or deferring in 2020 until we have a better handle on, you know, what is going to happen with our revenues. Digging down into those revenue projections a little bit more would be April 14th. So I think April 28th would be an appropriate time for the board at the regular meeting, unless we wanted to have a committee of the whole in the middle, to revisit how we want to handle the institutional and the MWRD detention credits.
Thanks, Mike.
The fact that they extended till April 30th, does that mean we can still have these videos conferences?
Yeah, I think that was part of the, Jeff, you want to address that? That was part of the disaster declaration, or was that subsequent to the disaster declaration?
No, it was actually expressly stated in the declaration. So that was extended in full today to the end of April.
And, look, I mean, folks, I don't want to disappoint anyone, but I expect it'll be extended further, okay?
Right.
You know, that's just the reality, that this may go on, you know, I think the most optimistic point of view on this would be we get some sort of breakthrough on treatment at the same time that we're through this four weeks, and then perhaps there's an early release. But I think most people are thinking this is the middle of May at a minimum. So I think the governor is being careful and doing this in measured steps, and that includes decisions on schools and the stay-at-home order, and doesn't want to go too far. But as he said when he extended it in his press conference, I'd love to rescind this earlier, but realistically, that's not likely to happen. I think almost everybody assumes we're, I think everybody assumed prior to him extending it, that we were in our houses until May 1st at the earliest, so.
Well, no, and I asked, I mean, obviously, since I assume most are not traveling as much and schedules are free, I would, I completely agree with Trustee Kennedy. Let's fast track this, but let's have more meetings, because if we have the information, the more we tell everybody in Willmet what this is going to cost and where they're going to contribute, the better, especially, and the sooner. I think so. I agree. We've taken too long on this. Let's get some meetings scheduled so we can start to give direction to everybody.
Yeah, in a weird way, this makes it more convenient. In a weird way, it's more convenient to meet electronically, right?
Yep.
So I have a question, just in terms of, just the logistics of how we would potentially be voting, President Blinsky, just because, so there is a, there is a, there's part of the recommendation, which is to delay the stormwater utility fee collection until the third quarter for 2020 for the non-residential properties. And we've had some discussion, obviously, about, about fast-tracking and getting a decision here on how we want to proceed with that. And so do we have to, so, you know, some of us could be more comfortable, you know, I think I stated that one of my concerns is we have 25% of those who are going to pay for this stormwater utility fee that haven't paid yet. And so do we, can we, is that, are we going to make a separate motion and a separate vote on that, I guess is what I'm asking? Or is that, is that with our motion to proceed with community playfield?
Well, I guess, I guess that's a question for Mr. Stein and for Mr. Bremen. I mean, these have been approved.
Well, not.
With the contracts. The question is, is there, how do you want us to provide guidance here?
But we've made, just so I'm clear, but just so I'm clear, we made a decision to only delay the stormwater utility fee for non-residential properties through the first quarter.
Right. So that would have to be, that would have to be a new ordinance in a regular meeting to change that.
That is correct. So to do nothing right now, if you did nothing at all, that we proceed with the project as the status quo. To extend the payments to a different quarter, whether a quarter three or another year, then there would have to be a separate resolution, basically just extending the resolution that we passed earlier in the year. That has to be done at a regular board meeting anyway. So if that's the direction coming out of the board today, obviously, I'll prepare that, and it'll be on the agenda. But right now, if we didn't have this meeting, you know, we're proceeding with the project as planned.
Yeah, and I think it's premature to direct you to do that until we have, until we have our conversation on it. I think that should be part of the conversation as we're figuring this out. You know, if, like, for example, if we can't figure it out in the next meeting, then we delay it or whatever. So I don't think, I think it's premature to say what path we're taking on that. You guys, I mean, Kathy, that's, I think, what you're saying, right? You're not comfortable making a call on that tonight.
Right. I'm not comfortable making a call on that. And that's, yeah, and I, you know, I could potentially be comfortable proceeding with community playfield if I knew that we were going to, you know, because there was a statement here that if we don't, if we delay the stormwater utility collection for non-residential properties and we actually don't collect it or don't go back, that there is going to be an impact on residential, on the residential rates.
Yeah, there's a lot, the other moving piece is when the bond issuance is and what the interest rate is. But we should be very sensitive, I mean, I'm very sensitive to that number going up for any reason, in particular since it should go down.
Well, but even with the gyrations that have occurred, it never got to 4%.
No, that's right.
So that's good. I think, I mean, it never exceeded the amount that we had sort of put into the model.
That's right. And I think, I think, I think if you ask Melinda, she was putting it in more thinking forward two years versus thinking forward, you know, three months. So, the 4%.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
If I can jump in here real quick on the stormwater fee, depending on the discussion tonight, you know, there's a couple options we can bring to the board at the April 14th meeting. You know, one of them could be to delay collection into the third quarter for those non-residential properties. Another option could be to bill the non-residential properties starting in the second quarter, but hold off billing the institutional ones and the ones that may be impacted by the detention credit until we make a decision on them, and we can go back and capture those funds later. Or we can bill them all and then give a credit later on based on our decision. So we have different options that would allow us to begin to collect those funds if we were worried about sending out a large bill at the end of the year. So we can break that down with some additional analysis for our next meeting.
If I could just throw in one more option on that, and I don't know if this would be just too expensive in terms of billing, but, I mean, there's a flat rate for everybody regardless. Is one idea just to bill a flat rate to the institutions and to the multifamily properties? Because we know that at a minimum, that that's what they're going to be paying, and then, you know, there's something there, and it would, you know, reduce their bill in the future, you know, when we decide on the credits. the future, um, you know, when we decide on the credits.
Yeah, I think that's something we can add to our analysis as well for the 14th.
Since I can't tell if your video is just delayed or if you're still
I think she, I think she's delayed.
Yeah, I think her video is much more delayed than her audio.
Yeah, she, she only talks after she stops talking.
She sees me after I stop talking.
Yeah, your, your videos keep going, that's why.
Is there something I should be doing?
No, I, I think it's just your bandwidth. But we could ask Peter.
What do I know about bandwidth? I don't even know how to turn the volume up last time.
So, that's what I was going to say. Mike, Jeff, how do you, what do you want us to do here at this point in time? You've heard everybody's thoughts. We don't have a motion on the table. I don't know if we need a motion on the table. It sounds, it sounds like there's at least, uh, a majority of the board that's comfortable moving the project ahead. You've heard the other concerns that are raised that I think we can address via, you know, accelerating the, the, the multifamily and institutional piece here. I mean, trustees, you heard everybody else's comments. I think, I think there is a consensus here to move forward. Uh, it may not be fully unanimous, but I think that, that as a group, the board is comfortable moving forward. I think that's the main thing that the board needs to convey to, to, uh, the staff. Mike?
Yeah, I think the direction's clear. The board's already voted on this, um, so we don't necessarily need another vote to continue doing what we were going to do. So I, the, I think we have the direction we need unless, you know, certain trustees wanted to just put a vote on the record, then we could do that as well.
I, I don't see particular reason to vote, do you, President Polinsky?
I'm, I'm not. I'm comfortable with where we are, because I think we've had the conversation. I think we've expressed our points of view and then overall, uh, the board is, is still supportive of the project. And I, and by the way, even for the trustees who, who expressed some concern, I don't think either, any of them can, expressed concern about the project as a whole, merely timing and data and information and the like. So, um, again, Mike, if you're comfortable, you have the, the guidance, I don't feel we need to put a motion on the table and, and, and call the roll.
Okay, I'm comfortable.
All right. Uh, let me find my agenda here. You normally have it right in front of me, but I don't. So, uh, that was, uh, that's the conclusion of item two on the agenda. Item three on the agenda is public comments. So I'm going to go back to Alex and ask Alex if there was any, uh, public comments submitted in advance of the meeting that wasn't related to item two.
This is Alex Arteaga. There was no, uh, public comment that was submitted.
Okay. And again, for people who are watching us on Facebook, I'm sorry, on YouTube Live, it's, it's the second time I've said that. If you have comments that you'd like to submit now to the Village Board, please submit them now and we'll pause for 30 seconds or so to let, uh, any comments queue up and we'll go to Alex in 30 seconds to ask him if there are any comments. Alex, any, any comments have come in?
There are no additional comments at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item four, which is other business. I'm not aware of any other business that was planned to be discussed tonight, so I'll move on to item five, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
So I believe that was moved by Trustee Sullivan, seconded by Trustee Kennedy. Again, given the circumstances, I will ask, uh, the clerk to call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Polinsky?
Aye. So motion carries. Uh, we stand adjourned at 9:15 PM. Thank you, everyone.